Good evening, like to call the Alton Board of Selectmen's Meeting, May 18, 2020, order at 6:01 PM. Please all stand for the pleasure of ladies on a moment of silence, that be grateful.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to read a brief statement first, gentlemen, then I have one amendment to the agenda for public correspondence. You have a letter, McKinnon, from the live suits meeting. Still further notice to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with the R S eight ninety-one dash A in a state of emergency at the governor's orders. Restriction restriction on public gathering in the town of Alton is moving from an in-person meeting to remote audio participation. To remotely attend the meeting, audio only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. For telephone access and remote access instruction, listen on the news and announcements on the homepage or telephone the Selectmen's Office, six oh three eight seven five two one one three, or six zero three eight seven five zero two two nine. Between eight AM and four thirty PM for the dialing code and meeting ID for each Selectmen's meeting. There continues to be no public input at this time. If you wish to have something written in the record, please call the Selectmen's Office at six oh three eight seven five two one one three, or six zero three eight seven five zero two two nine, or email the Selectmen at selecting@alton.nh.gov, or mail a letter to the Board of Selectmen, appeal box six five nine, Alton, New Hampshire, zero three eight zero nine. Your comments, questions, and concerns will be read at the next available meeting and answered at the meeting or the next available meeting. Gentlemen, I have one amendment to read into the record tonight of public correspondence from Richard Shea. That be the only amendment that I have for the agenda. I have second to that. Hold the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth?
Yes.
I don't see, I don't see public correspondence on here.
That's why I had them in the agenda for public correspondence from here on in, there will be a line that says public correspondence, so we won't have to do it. So do you, I'd like to just add one little thing to the agenda, is that possible?
Certainly.
Right to know requests. And then need new business?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor of ending new business number six, the right to know requests by Mr. Holt? And I'll hold the board.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Rochelle. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth? Yes, the vote is affirmative, the agenda is amended.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to add a couple to the old business?
What do you have, sir?
And both, I think, would be very brief, probably a minute. Our public input policy under old business and the way that the public can attend our meetings remotely.
And another amendment to the agenda on the old business, number two. Public input, and number three, public remote meetings, is that correct?
Yeah, access remote.
Access remote meetings. Do I have a second to that request?
Second.
Motion has been made to amend the agenda, number two and three under old business, second by Mr. Rochelle, any discussion? I'll hold the board, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Whitworth, yes, the vote is affirmative. Okay, at this point here, I'll read a first letter in the public correspondence, Richard Shea. Please accept this email as public comment for your next board meeting. I was very appreciative to the response received from Highway Department Ken Manig Roberts regarding the status of Robert's property. Providing the information I requested promptly and completely. I have two further requests to make of the board. First, would it be possible to post the meetings, meeting recordings within a short time after meeting? I don't know what's involved, but for citizens following town government activities, posting would be helpful. Second, would the board consider receiving and reviewing a restatage report, perhaps on a monthly basis, on various road reconstruction projects planned or underway? Often, there is a good deal of preliminary work being done in which the public is unaware. Anything you do in regard to either request would be much appreciated, thank you, Richard Shea. So, in reviewing it and talking with the town administrator, talked about the minutes of meetings. The ladies in the Selectmen's Office are doing the best they can to get the minutes out and as fast as they can, so they're doing the best they can, and then as soon as they have everything done, Josh does get it on our website, is that correct, Josh? He's shaking and said yes. As far as the second part, Mr. Shea, Mr. Roberts has been keeping us informed what's going on with road reconstruction. That's a very good possibility, he could come in once a month, give us an update.
Well, I think even if he, even if he just sends a report in and just, what approach and how bad they are, we could read it.
Does that sound satisfactory, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay. Liz, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Well, I'm just curious, how do the minutes, the green guy again, how do the minutes get made up? I know Mary's not here anymore. Mary takes the tape recordings from our meeting, and she sits in the office the whole next day and the day after sometimes, going through, speeding them up, slowing them down, going back over them, make sure she hears everything correctly and precisely, especially where she's not here, she wants to make everything as adequate as possible, besides being interrupted from her daily duties such as welfare office, things from the town administrator. So I know it has taken a couple of days normally for her to get the minutes done between her and Stacy, and this bit worked in the end.
Takes a little bit longer right now.
Of course. No, I was just, I thought that's the way we were doing it, but I just wanted to clarify. Is there anything else on that? Are you guys satisfied, are you gentlemen satisfied with the way I responded to Mr. Shea's line?
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
Well, that's why it's so important we don't wrinkle the papers and stuff, because it, when it, they have trouble, and not just the people listening, but they have trouble on the other end too, when they do the minutes and stuff. When we cross talk or anything, it's, takes them a long time to figure it out.
Yeah, but you don't do that. Okay. For announcements, town offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-fifth, in service of Memorial Day. Submission of public comments and questions and concerns, which I just did, sorry. We'll move on to appointments, being a new business code official handicap accessibility improvements to town hall bathrooms. In your bag, gentlemen, you'll see where over the last several years, we've made handicap accessibility to several town buildings, including Bay East and Bay West bathrooms, Pierce Center and Half Bay Community Schools, becoming compliant with the ADA standards. At the present, the town hall standards and bathrooms do not feel the next project should be these bathrooms. My thought is that we can evaluate what work needs to be done, map designs, get estimates, funding cannot be obtained through the town hall maintenance funds, present in an article to voters in March. Part of the evaluation will include opening up the short walls to the bathrooms, determining how the plumbing is running, will be decided, which is the best way to reconfigure plumbing for the new stuffs. Ten, new renovations, one bathroom at a time, so there will always be one available for staff and visitors. It's not feasible that we, other provisions will have to be made, one to assess, and I have, with the other project, doing the research, evaluation, coordinating other portions of this project. Just to go back to his note, I don't know why funds couldn't be there to boost fund the town hall buildings and improvements. I, this would be a good time to do it when we don't have much public coming into it, to have it looked at and reviewed. Sure, we have Mr. Devers on.
Good evening.
They did a, oh, hi, John. They did a really nice job on the bathhouses. That was actually the did that, Pax and Rex, Mr. Devers and everything, and they did a beautiful job on it, so if we had to, and it goes into when until we get it done, maybe we get them in here to do this one, because they did a really nice job down there.
Well, the nice thing about it, the crew, in the wintertime, be great.
Yeah.
But right now, right now's not the time to do it, because we don't want to bring more people in town hall.
Right, right.
But if we get this design done and stuff, and John looks at it, brings the back bars, then we present it to the trustees or the trust funds, there's no reason, my understanding, that the Clough Rural Trust Fund would not pay. John, do you have anything you can add to this?
Not really, I just, like I said, as we were making improvements, town hall is one of the heaviest used town buildings, and it really would be to our benefit to have these bathrooms accessible.
I would have to agree with you on that, using the men's room downstairs at times when you walk into that, we have another heater in there to keep the pipes freezing versus a radiator, and I kind of wonder about that, but I'm sure we, we would increase the heating capacity down there too at the same time?
Yeah, we'd find a way to do that, definitely.
It's long overdue. Do you have an agreement to allow the building, John, Mr. Devers, to go ahead with this, to get the plans?
Yes, I am.
And to have the town, instruct the town administrator, get ahold of the trustees of the trust fund, examine of it, and see if possible, these funds could be paid by Clough Rural Trust. It'll be a little tough, because they won't be able to have a meeting to decide yes or no, but at least the chairman could give us the idea or direction. All right, could I have a motion to approve that, please?
Don't move him, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is to make to have the code official, Mr. Devers, work in the handicap accessibility privileges to town hall bathrooms.
Second?
Second, by Mr. Holt. I will hold the board, any further discussion? I'll hold the board at this time, Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Motion is passed and affirmative. Moving on to number two, with Mr. Devers, Board of Health, septic waiver and exemptions. We remember reviewing this letter, that in the past, Board has viewed all septic waiver exemption requests that would directly impact the town body waters in an effort to minimize the workload for the board during the course of the pandemic. Mr. Devers is suggesting for the duration of the present restrictions, he reviews and decides whether or not to grant town waivers and exceptions. Board will still be providing the information for each waiver as usual, but I feel this will better serve all parties involved. Once restrictions are lifted, we will turn to normal procedures if the board feels they would like to continue hearing the requests using remote methods and have been established they can be done also. Mr. McDonald?
My problem with this is, if it's already given the waiver before we get it, we got questions or, or anything, then it's already played.
Mr. Devers, would you be giving the waivers before you give us the plans, or would it be after the meeting?
If you want to see, if you want to go over it in the meeting, and I can approve it afterwards, that's fine. There's, there's different options, whatever, whatever would work best for you, and make you feel most comfortable.
Because I know John ain't gonna let much slide by anyways.
Right.
I mean, he's good at what he does.
But not, let much slide by, not let anything slide by.
He don't let much slide by, I can tell you that.
And he's, anything, the word is anything.
All right, anything. He's been good about his job.
He's offering to take this off of your plate in your effort to keep these meetings short during the state of emergency.
I guess the only thing, I guess, John, would be if you could get them to us in advance, give us a couple of days to look at them that way there, if a board member has a problem, he can contact you, how's that?
That's fine with me.
I, I have no problem with relinquishing that duty right now during this, so we can help everybody involved, all parties involved. Now, what will be the process if you deny, will they have a chance to go to the Board of Selectmen, or will your word be, be this final word?
No, if they really didn't like my decision in that regards, they could bring it to the Board of Health, appeal, you know, would be the same as appeal on a code decision, the ZBA, they would appeal a health decision to the Board of Health.
Okay. And I have no, I have no problem with that. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve code official Board of Health septic waivers and exemptions to give him the authority right now through the pandemic? Made, the room one more second by Mr. Rochelle, any further discussion? Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, and Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yes. Vote is in the affirmative. Thank you, John.
Thank, thank you very much, you have a good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm gonna move on to Levy Park tree discussion. In your bag, you'll find there's a letter, John, the letter that you, we, you all saw last week, a letter of Mary Jarvis having conversation, Mrs. Downing, Nancy Downing. I did Nancy stop and summary today. She feels those other two trees are within the state right of way, because she told me where one boundary marker is, one piece of property, she told me where the other boundary marker was for the other property, it's Iron Penn and the Scott Williams driveway, his office down there, and the other one was Tom Loin's residence. Nancy also said normally when there's a cut in the road, and you'll see where the cut was down there when it was made, and the original bank, the natural banking is still standing the way it was, the one above where the tree's at right now, that's the natural banking right there, where they made their cut, the same made the cut, it shows that that's where they cut the road through. She feels hundred percent that's within the state right of way, so I did bring it to Liz today, this afternoon, she was gonna reach out to the DOT tomorrow, I believe, talk with the division engineer up there, discuss whether or not they will accept that or not, I don't know, but we might have to figure out, see if Mr. Roberts, if we're gonna find those two points, that should talk to him. And she also said the Levy Park fence post is right on the state right of way, so you could try to take that right up to there.
Yeah, there's a marker in Loin's, by Loin's, and I'm wondering if we should, Kenny, tape it off or something, so state can see, they can see, this is a granite marker there.
There's granite mark there, and down by Mr. Williams, there's an iron rod, Nancy said she found it with a metal detector.
But, the iron rod was just, that separates, because the town, the Levy Park right of way in there, goes to right in by Scott's driveway, and there's a metal pipe there that does that right away in there, so I'm not sure if that's the metal pipe that they're on, because there was also a metal pipe that shows the town line there, because we're on the other side of that brook. So that could be the metal pipe for Levy Park and Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams, probably.
Built.
So I don't know how you gentlemen feel about this, or Liz has more to add to this. She was gonna check on it, did you want to tell them about what you did, talk about with the contractors, you're having a contract come up tomorrow, to give a, do you contract come up, give a price?
Yes. Ken Roberts is having our tree company come up with an estimate to remove the trees, all three trees, or at least two of them. We have a contract with ArborTech, they are the company we use for all tree removal. When I called DOT last week, they also have some sort of an agreement in place with a tree company, come to sign out, it's the same company, but I had asked DOT, if they removed their one, the one tree that was in their right of way, would they be willing to have their company remove the other two trees while they were there at the same time, and we would pay for our fair share? I spoke to two different people in two different weeks about this, one was, what are the days were, I've got them in my office, and they seemed okay with it, they were going to check with the tree company, get an estimate, and get back to me, I haven't heard anything yet. When I call tomorrow, I'll, when I call after Ken finds the boundaries, then everything will.
Right, that's just, I was just gonna say.
I'm not.
I was also thinking that possibly call the Interelectric Co-op, this is major telephone lines, electrical lines right across the street, that those trees will also take out, that it might be in their best interest to take those trees.
Yeah, Tom.
So it's possible, maybe three of us working on, because it'll stay down, Interelectric Co-op, it'd be middle of impact to all three parties involved.
Yep.
But I don't think we should wait, keep waiting down the road for the state to act on this, because they're at the end of their season, their money is dried up, they've also been told that in the near future, that they're not gonna have a whole lot of money either. So, so I guess what I'd like is a consensus, we also have the town administrator contact with Interelectric Co-op, talk to them about it, and Mr. Roberts, go down and see if he can find the two markers that Nancy Downing saw.
Yeah, because this has been a pretty windy year. There's a granite marker down by Ben Jones's old house, behind, on the other side of Scott Williams, granite marker down in there, I wonder if that's, it shoots down through there to the other marker?
Possible. Mr. Rochelle?
Chairman, can you clarify, I went down and looked at, I can clearly see the tree with the, with the sand at the base, is the other two trees right along on either side of those other two, right there, so they're not separated? It's those three that are right there, yeah, just wanna make sure.
Right on the bank, and right on the edge of that bank.
Yeah, they're right in it.
One goes, they all go.
Yeah. I can see they're all tied, and we've had a lot of wind this year.
You look at the one that has the sand on it, and you watch it every day, you can see it as little by little.
Oh, it's, it leans.
Could be on the still, the least windy day, that thing could still.
Did you walk up behind it and stuff?
No, I just walked around in front, and aside.
You got to follow that trail up behind it, you'll see it's hollow and stuff, it's the...
Yeah, it's not good, no.
No, it's not good.
My worst fear is coming down on somebody passing by on the road.
In all that, it's, in all actuality, now the change of subject, there's another tree such as that, right above, where the town beach is, right above the public restroom, just, just to the left of it, there's another one, there's another one in there, but the base of that's all gone to rotting.
Because when we did the doors, we had to have Kenny come down, and he looked at it, and it was leaning right into that bathhouse.
There's another one, it wasn't much like. It's further roll, it's not just over that, but if it came down, it would take all the lines, it would land right on the beach.
Is it another big bull pine?
Oh, yeah. It's right off Marion Road, it's up toward the top of the hill, but it's a big one.
That town property, is that the?
That's, that's questionable. I'm not a hundred percent sure, that is town property, but how far up the hill, I'm not sure.
All right, so you're consensus agreeable, have Mr. Roberts see if he can find the lines, also to have the town administrator contact with Interelectric Co-op.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Holt? Holt. I think we're, these three trees might be state owned, might be in the state, state right of way, I think we should keep on with the state too. But we are gonna keep on with the state, she's gonna contact the state tomorrow, she's gonna come, contact Mr. Hansley? No.
Probably Mr. Lambert and Mr. Hans, probably Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Lambert, the district engineer, she's gonna contact them. In the meantime, we should reach out to the Co-op, because they might want to come in, because it'd be financially devastating for them to have that all wiped out, and the telephone companies, and the cable companies. Because I looked at it myself, and I was gonna suggest that, that, you know, they better. We're in agreement with that, am I right, gentlemen?
Everybody chips in a little bit, it'd be a lot easier on tax paid on everybody.
Move over to Highway Department, bid and award for tree removal, Tom Road and Valley Road, we have Mr. Roberts on the phone, Josh.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm here.
Hi, Ken, how are you tonight?
Good, good, you mentioned something earlier, and could I just make a slight comment on that?
Yes, sir.
Going pin to pin is not the greatest ideas, because not all properties are in a straight line.
Yes, sir.
And it was determined by Todd, who is the supervisor for this shed, Donnie's the foreman here, that two of them weren't in the state right of way, and one of them was. Now, I, I don't know, I don't know what the measurements are, but I'm happy to look pin to pin, but that's not necessarily, I don't know the layout of the property, I don't know if it's a straight line, but I can look at the pins for you. And speaking...
Maybe if we could find the measurement off the center line, what it should be, you might know that already, and I don't, so.
Yep, and I can ask for that too, I don't know exactly what they measured.
Well, that would be great, if you could do that, that would be fabulous.
Okay.
So, before I get started with the year, though, I'm gonna go back a couple. Not to ruffle the papers in your ears. And on package, you also have part of the Levy Park, the brand stuff in here, well, you got too far forward on that, but it wasn't on the agenda itself. Yeah, it is. Where's that part of the T H report?
I'm just gonna bring it up under T.
Okay. Okay, sure. All right, Ken, I'm back with you.
Yes, sir.
So gentlemen, see, Mr. Roberts has had four bids come in for tree removal on Tom Road, Valley Road, please see below for the breakdown. Urban Tree was the lowest bidder, overall bidder, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, nine hundred and fifty, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, he worked with the company in the past, and he has a concern there on scheduling, because we are in the middle of road reconstruction season, he was making a recommendation to afford the bid to, tree removal bid to ArborTech of eight Tanner Road, Giltford Beach. They have a working relationship, they've shown up all the time where they're supposed to be, they do a quick cleanup job, and I believe on one of them, what was the difference in between the two bids? Nineteen?
Nineteen fifty.
Yeah, nineteen fifty.
Nineteen fifty.
And I'd like to say that the other tree company didn't make deadlines and didn't show up on promise, which makes a big difference when you're doing construction.
Anybody else have a question, Mr. Roberts?
I'm just curious as to why Kenny's fault, it's basically the same price with ArborTech to Tom Road to do thirteen trees, to Valley Road, to thirty-one trees.
That's a complicated, you know, the trees on, the trees on, trees on Tom Road are pretty complicated, because they're all in the wires, so it's crane lifts and crane drops, and the same thing, you gotta do crane drops over on the other ones, but they're a lot more hardwoods, and they're much easier to take down, even though there's thirty-one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, one question. Yes, Mr. Holt? Basically, you're recommending ArborTech over Urban because of the timeframe?
It's not just because of the timeframe, and I failed to put anything further in there, and I think Virgil came up with, mentioned it already, is that we've had previous experience with the other company, and we're unsatisfied with timing as well as workmanship.
Clean up.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Yes, sir.
Another comment, so, Mr. Roberts? I have a motion to approve the tree removal bid of Tom Road and Valley Road to ArborTech, ArborTech of eight Tanner Road and Giltford, New Hampshire, from the recommendation of the Mr. Roberts, so moved. Motion is made, and second by Mr. Rochelle, I'll open it up for discussion.
Is the insurance enough? Five hundred thousand property damage, five hundred thousand personal?
No, that's not enough, we usually enable.
Should be a million.
Yes.
What's our policy?
Million, a million.
A million.
Yeah.
Liability. I don't have that, I don't believe I have insurance.
Because this one's...
It says general liability, one million, property damage five hundred thousand.
Yeah, but if you go to the other page, damage to rental, a hundred thousand, personal injuries, a million, it's altogether different on their policy here, you have to keep going backwards to their insurance policy. But it's still each accident's five hundred thousand, and it says each occurrence, four million, so I'm not sure.
So, look, doing a quick look, this, this is fine, commercial general liability, each occurrence, one million.
One million, okay.
That's usually how it works, that top line.
I was checking.
Yeah.
Because I've seen the five hundred thousand, so I'll...
Commercial general liability.
All right, motion has been made, second, and any other further discussion? I call for Holt, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, the vote is affirmative, have your project on the way down, Ken.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, Ken, would you like to stay with us on this next one?
Yeah, the boat launch.
Ramp discussion?
I, I'm willing to listen, but again, we were, I, I wanted to call Stony Ridge Environmental when I saw this, and didn't get a chance to call her, because I wanted to see what the wetlands permitting would be, in order to reinforce the lower part of that ramp, and I guess that's gonna be a big question.
Yes, sir.
So you know pretty much what we're talking about, the hole at the end of the boat ramp?
Oh, yes, I even dove on there, but I could, I mean, you know, but I haven't physically looked at it, but I have an idea, but I know it drops off in like forty feet of water there, so I don't know, in backing up the ramp without looking at it, I don't know how much material we're talking about to get it to actually back up properly.
Right, because the problem is that backing off the pavement, paved ramp.
Yep.
And it drops about three feet, three and a half feet, right off the end of the ramp.
Yep.
Trailer's getting hung up. Getting hung up. It took a couple of wreckers to pull one of them out with a truck with a three axle trailer and stove the trailer, the axles bent them all to half.
Yeah, it usually rips them up pretty good.
Yeah, that's what I mean, and if we can just fix just off the pavement so they don't get stuck right there, slope it or something in there.
Yeah, the unfortunate side of this, and Virgil, you've done those work as well as I have, is, you know, a lot of this is being dug up by power, you know, they're, they're.
Yeah.
They're putting power to it and they're digging the hole, the same thing with the ramp over at Fishing Game Property. They did the same thing, they dug that deep hole. And the question is, if we put this rip raft in, which would probably be six inch, it's enough to support a trailer if it gets on it, but I don't know what somebody, if they power, you know, they power load, whether or not they'll blow some of that out of there too.
Yeah, stroke.
I, I don't know what the bottom looks like, I don't know if it starts to flatten out a little bit there so you can utilize something like that, or it's, it just keeps dropping right off.
That, or maybe trimmy pour it, pour it out about four or five feet on there with a trimmy pour.
Alright, Mr. Holt, you have a question?
Yeah, a lot of boat ramps that I've been involved in use, uh, similar to what you just mentioned, uh, slabs. They put them down and they work pretty good, they stay.
Yeah, cause you could trimmy pour that right in place, you could trimmy pour it right in place as long as your hose don't break, fall, see.
You could just buy them and set them right in, of course, you'd have to have the bottom.
That one would have to be fixed first.
Yeah, would have to be fixed first, but if you just put dirt there, it's, it's gonna be an ongoing issue.
This is what the Fishing Game is doing over there, so those concrete slabs.
Exactly, that's what they know.
But for us to do anything this year, it's gonna be really tough because budget is where it is, we don't know about the revenues, we have no money budgeted for this project. But it's something we should look into for next year, I don't know where you could get money this year to fix it.
Right, no, even if we put a warrant article out.
Mr. Chairman, what have we done in, in the past, like, nothing's been done for that in how many years?
Well, I can remember as a young man, back when I was in my twenties, same way then, you backed them so far, you dropped it, some folks ended up going trucking, car loading everything right in the water. Because they got over that lip, so it's nothing that's new to this town.
And I can remember.
There's been no attempts in the past to try to just.
I think, I think years past, they tried to make the ramp go down further.
The people used to carry rock over there too, some of the old people used to carry rock over there from the, by the wall, take them all and throw them down in.
I mean, if putting, at least putting, uh, stone there, at least would that help for now?
Well, it's whether or not we can get a wetlands permit, how much cost to put the stone.
Exactly, if that was on that next question, we'd have to get a wetland permit.
Anyway, so at this time, maybe we could ask Mr. Roberts to discuss what he was gonna talk about, um, contacting, who'd you say that was, Ken?
Stony Ridge Environmental are our environmental people, and the only question I'd have is she'd probably say, you have to do an underwater survey to see exactly what's there, to.
Yes, sir.
Make it, if you do that, is it a fix or it's not a fix, depending how fast it drops off. You almost have to do a survey of the bottom, you have to put a diver in the water and, and measure it in segments going out through there and see what it does.
And at this point in the year, where we don't know where our revenue's gonna be, there's no money for that either. So unless we can get a diver that would go down and do a survey free of charge for us, that's gonna be a little hard to be pressed to get done this year.
To do your survey, you can do it from a laser right offshore, just get a benchmark off the bottom of a, um, ramp and then just walk back through it. You can stick it and get your survey off the bottom.
That's something between you, Mr. Roberts, I, I have no knowledge of that, so I guess I would leave it to you if you're willing to do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts, are you willing to work with Mr. McDonald on this?
Yeah, I think I've got two sticks, I can go up to like thirty-two feet with them if I taped them together.
Do you, do you need a boat to do that too?
Yeah, you'd need a boat to actually, but you'd have to, you'd have to stabilize it offshore and then, well, there's a lot of stuff to it, but yeah, you'd need a small boat, just a small one.
If me, Ken, um, I'm a certified diver, if that works, I can do it for free and I can just go in there to look and take some measurements.
That would be cool, that would be good, but you're gonna have to have somebody stop all boat traffic in that area, be sure you have diver flaggers down, no launching wire in the water.
Props out.
Yeah.
We might, we might like it too, do we have some life insurance on land?
So I'm, I'm doing that with the kayak.
So gentlemen, are you all agreeing with Rochelle, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Roberts working on this together and they set their own time and parameters to do all this? Mr. Holt? You, Mr. Wentworth, yes. Gentlemen, I'll let you three work it out and we'll wait to hear back from you, is that okay?
Anybody?
Ken, yeah.
Yes, yep.
And I think that's all we'll need you for tonight, so I'm gonna let you go.
We need a family.
No, I don't need back laws, so if you can hang in there a few more minutes, you wanna hang up, then I'll get Josh back on the phone, how's that?
Okay, I'm here to the end, so, no problem, I'll always be here. Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. So moving on to new business number six, we have the right to know request, Mr. Holt.
Uh, yes, uh, being a new kid on the block, uh, I'm just curious, people fill these out, write the request forms, which I personally did one just a little while back. Uh, and the town administrator answered mine, I got it in the mail. It was a little late, but that was, that wasn't their fault, while they put all of them, instead of all the pay on it, no problem. Uh, and I had, I wasn't too happy with the request or the answers, but that's another issue, but did any, do we receive those?
The right to know requests?
Yeah. So, do we receive the answers, the, well, what goes out of the town hall to the taxpayers of town? Do we, I feel the board should get a copy of the request and the answer.
There's a reading file in the selectmen's office, it's above the desk, you'll see it. Tom, Mary or Stacy, hadn't shown it to you, there's a reading file in there, all incoming correspondence and outgoing correspondence.
Okay, so it is, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Now, the issue of, well, of course, it's hard to do it. Well, okay, okay.
Well, I guess what we can do, I guess what we can do at this point, after a selectmen's meeting, if you want one of us to stay with you, you can sit here and go through it and let yourself out of the building, cause I think you have the code to the town hall, right?
Or an E M T meeting.
Or an E M T meeting afterwards, you could sit here. The emergency management team.
Oh, yeah.
For a meeting, you could always sit and review it then too.
Cause the other thing I do is, like, when we're having a selectmen's meeting, is come in a little early, sit and go through it. Well, everything out.
Well, see, I'm used to it.
Cause a lot of times Mary's here, so you can ask the questions, and she's got the answers right there.
Years, years ago, and I will say this years ago, and I'm gonna go back to early two thousands and nineteen nineties, yes, all incoming correspondence were in unpackments. Very meeting, we saw the incoming, I mean, the responses weren't always readily available, but the next meeting, the responses were in a packet. But you were talking a packet that was close to three to four inches thick at times. Um, I, and I don't know, and I'm assuming this, I'm gonna say somewhere in the two thousands, they have decided, or the town and selectmen decided to save on paper and costs if they were cut back and they made a reading file. So the selectmen have the chance to come in, review the reading file, they have any questions, they ask Mary to put it on the agenda or something like that, and then we can discuss. Is that, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that is, no, no, as long as, as long as you can get to it. Yeah, but it's hard, cause it's, you know, system we're in now, I, you know, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Old business, Harmony Park wall discussion, selectmen Paul or Rochelle. So Rochelle asked for this to be put on, cause we are going in the summer and we didn't wanna hear Mr. McDonald say we're kicking the can down the road any further. Uh, Mr. Rochelle was probably gonna get to that point, so if we can get Mr. Roberts back on the phone, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for sticking in there with us, Ken, but I heard you've been making notes on us when you're down there meeting anyway, so at your retirement party, I can roast you a little bit. But that might not be for three more years, right, Mr. Roberts?
That's right.
You never know. You never know.
No, you never do, sir. Thanks for hanging in with us there tonight, alright, Mr. Rochelle, I'm gonna turn this over to you, you requested to be back on there, you have reports from each end there, and you also have, I think, from Superior Fence Company too.
Um, thanks, Ken, um, where are you at at this point with the estimates, I know you received one? For, um, the fence itself on the wall, I believe it was eleven, right around eleven thousand dollars.
Yes, and, and we've, I've tried to secure another one from a custom builder, which was Alan, and that was suggested by Virgil, but he hasn't given me one, but again, you're talking about estimates. I think the best thing to do at this point, if the, if this was to proceed by the board of selectmen to a fence line and you weren't gonna complete the wall as originally designed, then the, there has to be a set of specifications done for a rail and actually put it out to bid, because it is over, gonna be well over five thousand dollars, and if I had to take a, a good guess at this, we're talking in around eighteen thousand for this thing to be done.
Is that also including returning the block with the thirty percent restocking fee?
Yeah, and actually I have something from Michikor on that as well, and it's, it's been given to the town administrator. There's a bunch of stuff together there, but again, you're not getting like a lot of money back, so you're not.
No.
I don't think you're gonna be in the ballpark.
Right now, shows with the quote number seven nine five one, that we would have a credit of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents, am I correct with that?
I think so, I don't have the Michikor thing directly in front of me, right, it isn't much.
That's what it's saying, yes.
So, now, if you're looking at a Superior Fence Company of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, what they're just es- giving you an estimate right now?
Yeah, and the unfortunate side of that, that's for a thirty-six inch rail and that's the smallest they can purchase from Superior, and I talked to Rick very thoroughly about this, and he was very adamant on a couple of things, that, you know, you're talking about a custom fence that eighteen inches or twelve inches tall to put on top of that, and he reiterated the, the fact that you have to drill through the top block and you have to get into the next block, and that's a cost too, because he done, he has done these before with a full fence on top.
But this is vinyl fence, the top of them blocks?
I really do, I don't have the specifications in front of me from Rick, but that, but again, it's thirty-six inches, is the smallest he can get, and if you're gonna put that on top of it, it's gonna look like a prison, unfortunately.
Because I'd like to see the steel or stainless or aluminum.
I think that actually is steel.
It's ornamental, yes.
Ornamental, so it's gonna be.
Almost like your white metal rail fence. But they also have.
White, ornamental, vinyl.
Used to, his speech was ornamental vinyl. And the problem is, when it gets cold, somebody waxes it and they crack right out.
Yeah, it shouldn't be vinyl, it shouldn't be vinyl, it should, aluminum, um, the ornamental aluminum, thirty-six inches, uh, never, we, we had discussed eighteen inches because we were going to just take out one row at one point. We were discussing putting back another row, swapping it, so that it would fit on the structural blocks and then put a cap on that and go with an eighteen inch, that was something that was discussed, but not necessarily that we had to do. If we could take off two rows and go with a thirty-six inch fence railing, if you will, or fence, uh, that is aluminum, black aluminum, uh, affixed to the top of that, um, that would not be objectionable, I think that would look similar to looking at, at deck with railing.
I vote as to let them finish their job, put the cap rock on, fill it in, and then adjust later, and let's get it done and see how it looks once it's done, because everything looks like hell until you get your job finished.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roberts.
A couple of things is, you can't take two blocks off of it from what's there because it's a real unfinished block underneath, it's got big concrete domes on top of it, which lock the block together. That's why it was mentioned by Michikor, you'd have to take out that structural block, change that as well in order to put a cap on top of it to put a regular fence on top of that, which now, because it's buried, is gonna be rather expensive to dig all of that out and actually remove that one as well.
No, I understand that, I understand that, uh, but how are you gonna do your thirty-six inch, uh, railing then?
We're not, it's, it's a quote, again, to get back off the thing, it is a quote, and you need to come up with the specifications that you would like to see, and we need to write those and send that out to bid and see if anybody would actually bid on it. I can't even get a quote from a custom builder on it.
It's Mr. Roberts, you, your estimate, I mean, this is a quote of one thousand eight hundred, you were saying something about eighteen thousand dollars earlier, correct?
I think, you know, if we got eleven thousand dollars for a fence they can buy across the counter basically and install, to do a custom fence at two hundred ninety-four feet long is gonna be pretty expensive, you know, to do that, and I, I happen to agree with Virgil is that let's finish the job, put it together, and if it wants to change at a later date, then someone can create a warrant article for a certain amount of money and go back in and change it and see if the voters will vote for it.
Alright, let me ask this question, so are you suggesting that we still take off two rows of block and then put the cap on, or just take off one row and then put the cap?
Neither.
Neither, so you say put the cap on.
I'd say we don't do either, we just complete the job.
Complete the job as is right now.
Right, and if at a later date, because a lot of people voted on this, Mr. Chairman, you know, in the, in the meetings, they voted on this, they went to the, the polls and voted on this, and we're not hearing from those people, and I've had a lot of people make comments saying they like the way it looks, and yes, I know there's people that don't like it. Unfortunately, we can't please everybody, but let, let us see if we can schedule them back in, complete their job, and if there's a group that would like to change the look of that, then they ought to put a petition warrant article or warrant article backed by the board of selectmen to change it and come up with estimates to change it.
Okay, that's my next question's gonna be to you, that right now, I believe the last eleven, I don't have the figures in front of me, we got about twenty-four thousand left in that, which we owe most of that to, um, G M I, correct?
Yes, we owe ten percent of their contract to them.
What will be left in that money after that, probably zero, right?
No, I think there's gonna be a little bit of money, I think that we owe them, if they come in, and I don't have the, the only thing I don't have is to change order for the rip raft out front. I did get, um, I did get the bill for the wetlands, they had to do after the fact permit for that, so if I had to guess, it's gonna be four or five thousand dollars in there maybe? As a guess.
How does this, and also going along with this, how do, how does this put us in a place with the retaining wall to the property next to it?
It's not. Yeah, that's not a discussion that we've had yet, I mean, if, if we end up doing it, we end up doing it as the highway crew. If the gentleman under the last meeting that you discussed is that we will go in and reinstall that road as wa- that wall as was, and with no guarantees.
So my next question to you is, do we feel that G M I has any responsibility in this with the runoff and towards that wall when they got done, when they got done last fall?
My personal opinion, no, the road, the runoff came from, you know, twenty-eight A, and also besides the point is that, you know, I mean, if you go down there and look, I mean, I guarantee there's a lot of snow and water and rain and everything got dumped off of that by plows down over it, I can't guarantee what, what exactly happened, but I think Paul mentioned that he had pictures that were done in December, well after the fact, that G M I was completely gone before that wall fell.
Okay.
Next.
That's, that's what I wanted to ask you, okay, this time I'm gonna let Mr. McDonald ask you a question.
Got a couple of questions. We're going to change order, I thought we're rip rafting, because they found the ledge, they're gonna rip raft that whole bottom.
They're gonna rip raft the outside face, they haven't finished the job, that's part of what they're still gonna do.
That's what you're saying was a change. That's what you're saying was a change order, and that wasn't a change order, it was supposed to be rip raft across the base of that wall to begin with.
No, it wasn't designed that way. That's why we had to go back for the after the fact permit, we called D S and they allowed us to do it. So we had to file after the fact permit that we're going out two feet beyond the footprint that we disturbed.
And on that retaining wall, if you read through their contract, they're responsible for runoff, they changed the shape of that land in there in Harmony Park, which caused that runoff, they're responsible to fix that wall. And the third thing is, if we finish it, cause those ain't chinked, there's, there's kinks that go in all them stones with the spaces that everybody's saying and everything else, and you finish that, because inside that's still gonna come up to your forty-two inch mark.
Correct.
And level out in there and stuff, so it's not, I don't think it's gonna look that bad once we get the finishes on it.
I mean, there's still more material that's gotta be put, plus there's lume that's gotta be put in there, and then we have to seed it and everything, so there's, there's still quite a bit of work. There's granite steps, the ADA ramp has to be put in play, the beach has got to be cleaned up, there's, there's an enormous amount of work.
Well, that's what I was concerned with as well, Ken, is, is getting the beach picked up, cleaned up, and so that we can move on, move forward, and that we don't lose the contract, obviously. Uh, cause he's gonna be, he's not gonna wait forever, he's gonna be busy, right? G M I?
Right, and I don't know if they're already booking up, we'd have to call them, if the cease and desist is lifted by the board of selectmen, then it would take for the board of selectmen to make that decision, and then I think Liz needs to talk to G M I and tell them it's lifted, and then I'll talk to Jeff to find out when we can possibly get in the schedule for them to come back and complete their job.
Mr. Holt?
Yeah.
I have three concerns. Reference the washout on the private property. I feel, I'm not an engineer, but I don't think that is our problem. I think that would have happened anyways. From my opinion, I'm not an engineer. Maybe we should have some clarification on that. My, uh...
Wait, wait, don't interrupt.
My, uh, third, my second issue is money. Uh, how much is left? We got a report back, uh, 4/14. We all got one, and it had the cover sheet, and it comes up with $24,500. But if you go through this, we have an accounting system that is kind of followed up here. So I talked to our accountant, and very helpful. She's new. There's one thing missing that's not on this. Is the Stony Ridge Environmental Bill. $5,000. That's not on here.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. No, sir, go ahead, Mr. Roberts. And there is a more...
Okay, right, and I do have some, a few answers to the question that Mr. Holt just brought up. We've been doing some research. We did some re... I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ken.
Okay, we've done some research. The 4,524.34 was taken out of the wrong Capital Reserve Line item. It was actually taken out of the wall that's on the opposite side of the big. Now, this was done, this was done, and I'll tell you, the bill that was, when it was paid, it was paid, well, the date of the bill is 6/26/2017. And I don't know how to change that, and it's so far back, I'm not even, I don't even know what to say to that. So there is a $4,500 missing out that should have been taken out of this account on Harmony Park. It was taken out of the ball, the research that they found it, it's actually got taken out of the wall, the $20,000 that was set aside for the wall on the other side.
The $4,500 down?
Wait, wait a minute. Let Holt finish this question. So Ken answered one of your questions for Stony Ridge.
Well, yeah, but he hasn't. Well, he has.
Yes, he has.
And I agree. I have that.
Money was paid out of the wrong account. That happened in between the transitions of different finance officers within the town hall.
I understand. Now we have that. But I'm told that we have $24,000 left.
Right.
It shouldn't be. It should be $24,000 minus that Stony Ridge.
I don't know where the years have expended, and the town administrator is looking into it with the finance officer, how to put that one back into something that money has been expended from years ago. That's what they're looking into.
Well, when you do a project in a town, I, we appropriate money. We ask the people, two, there was two $75,000 warrant articles, there was 150,000. And then we took some monies that were left here and left there and did it, right? But when you have a project, all the expenses in that project are supposed to go and be accountable in that project.
Correct, and it was, but you have to remember, when the town went to a position, when Paulette Wentworth retired after 30 odd years, Troy Neff got brought on. And in between Troy Neff being here a year and then Laura being brought on, a lot of things that were found after the fact that shouldn't have happened, Laura is going back and trying to figure them out. Now, the part of the $5,000, whether and how that's going to get replaced, we do not know yet. But right now, in this account, there's still $24,000 left. If you want to take out the $5,000, that's fine, it brings it down to 19,000. Probably won't have any money left after GMI finishes things across that. But that's what Liz and the highway agent and the finance officer are working on right now.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so in looking at the original contract with GMI, there's actually $13,121 left in their original contract. And I do not know whether or not, well, how much they're going to change this for the change order and the rip raft. And on the other hand, is the after-the-fact permit that was filed by Stony Ridge Environmental was $1,353. So they are, those two numbers are a must.
So it's $1,300, and what was the other amount?
$13,000, $13,101.
$101, that's GMI, right?
Yes.
How much was it for Stony Ridge?
$1,353.82.
All right, so roughly $15,000, quote rounding it off.
Yes, without the change order.
So minus the $5,000 from the, from the $24,000, we should, 19, so it's possibly on maybe $4,000 if we're lucky in that account.
Yeah, $4,524. And we just don't know what the change order from GMI is going to be on the rip raft.
Right, right, okay. Gentlemen, we're at a turning point here. Needs to get done. Needs to get done. So my question is, the cleanup of the beach area, the looming and everything else, is that all part of GMI's contract?
Yes.
Okay, so there should be no extra expenses from GMI except for the change orders coming, correct?
Yes.
Now, at this point, I want to ask Liz, she wants to say something here, so I want to just have her speak to us for a minute.
Sure. Two things. First, the conversation keeps going around to the collapsed wall, and I recommend that you all wait until the next selectmen's meeting, when you will have the legal opinion, which we have received, and Ken will be in attendance.
Okay.
The second thing is, it's on this most up-to-date sheet that you received today at your seat. If you go down the list, there is an account called retaining wall. It's about halfway down the page. There's $20,275 in it, in coin change. That is the Harmony Park retaining wall account. The $4,000 or $5,000 that was paid for a few years ago, that money was never in any other capital reserve funds. Those funds were encumbered, and the bill was paid for. So everything that's on this sheet, these two pages right now, this is correct. These are the most up-to-date figures.
Didn't come out of the west side wall appointment?
Okay, because there was a concern that it was.
Yes, I just checked with the finance, we ensured the other one.
We get that legal opinion so we can study it and do what we got to do before.
If that's what the board wishes.
So he'll take it home with you tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, we're not going to discuss it.
Oh, we're not going to, right, that's all right.
Get to my computer.
Okay.
Were you referring to what?
I just like a few days ahead of time.
The washout.
The washout?
The washout.
Yeah, we're not talking about that, sir.
No.
Right, right.
I'm asking for the legal opinion a little earlier.
I just wanted to ask you. So gentlemen, we got a, we're at a standpoint right now, there's $20,000, $20,275, 43 cents left in that account with the property $15,000 yet to be expended except for the at-work charges.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I got one more question, Mr. Roberts. So Mr. Roberts, you stated the loan is included in this price of GMI, the cleanup of the beach, that's all their responsibility. Town will not have to do anything, correct?
Clean up the beach, the parking lot, the slopes, on the, by the bathhouse, all of that belongs to them.
Okay, then I got a question. Gentlemen, at this point, Mr. McDonald has a point. I'll ask him to ask his question next.
Are they going to put sand back on that beach?
That was not discussed.
Or can we run a load of sand down and have them unload it? Because by the time you scrape up the stone and clean up, you're going to have, the beach should get a layer of sand, if we can back in there with a wheeler or something and let them unload it or whatever we got to do. Just to put sand back on that beach so it ain't all messed up when they rake the stone out? You know, thinking it up a little?
We've done that previously. We usually dump it in the parking lot across the street and then take it over to the loader and dump it over the side. And it's raked out by Parks and Rec.
Well, that's what I mean. If they got a machine there to clean it up, we should do it while they're right there and just have them put it on the beach for us?
Entirely up to you. I can talk to the Parks and Rec director. I'm sure she has some funds for sand, and we can do it that way.
That's what I was going to say. It's usually a line item for beach baking for sand.
Yeah. I just think it definitely looks better.
Yeah, me too. So gentlemen, can I have a motion to lift their stop work order on GMI and have Mr. Roberts contact GMI and Liz to contact, and we get this project back on on the road again and get it finished the way it was originally proposed? And then we'll see where it comes from there about a railing for next year for petition warrant article or something of that nature. So moving. Motion has been made to lift the stop work order on GMI. Have Mr. Roberts, Liz Deion, contact GMI to get this going and see when we get them in there and get it done. Move forward on this to get it done the way it was proposed, the way it was engineered. With second by, Paul Rochelle, Paul Rochelle. Any further discussion? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Holt?
Could I clarify the motion?
Yes, sir.
We're going to build, the motion stating we're going to fulfill the total contract.
Build the total contract.
Build the wall with the cap and over it.
Yes.
And we'll address possibly it later.
Yes.
Next fall, during budget processing, somebody wants to come in a petition warrant article, put railings up, or bring the wall back down.
So the Board of Selectmen is not going to go any further.
At this point, we do not have the funds to go any further.
Can't. Well, we're not going to, we're not going to plan, we're going to wait for somebody to do a warrant article. We're not going to, we're not going to go any further.
Not necessarily. It depends on this board if they want to bring it before themselves for the railing up next fall or next winter. That'd be up to the board to discuss. But at this point, I don't even want to go to that point. I wanted to see the wall get done.
Right.
And it's all finished for the season. People can enjoy it.
And that way, people can look at it and they can make up their minds.
I got, I got no problem with that. I just want to make it clear.
Yes.
And so basically, once this gets done, it's going to be basically a dead issue. We're not...
No more than some.
It's not going to be a dead issue, but it won't be an issue brought up again this season.
Okay, okay. Well, that's what I'm... At least that's my hope, unless one of you guys bring it up again.
Well, that's why I'm asking, you know, I consent.
He did not, really. Any further discussion? All those in favor, I'll pull the board, Mr. Holt.
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth? Yes, voting for affirmative. Mr. Roberts, thank you for your time tonight. I do appreciate it.
And I'll be here for the town administrator's report, because I may have a few things in that as well.
Yes, sir. I can do it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going, we're going to move on to number two, public input. Mr. Whitman?
Okay, I've had a constituent contact me and say that we cannot, even during the pandemic, stop public input, live public input. Now, it seems to me, a couple of years ago, the board was told that we have total control over public input as to whether even to have it or not. And there was the consensus of the board. So I'm just wondering, do we have to have Attorney Sessler look at that? Are we missing something, or do we have that kind of control?
Well, can I talk to him? Because according to my, my learning experience from Mr. Sessler, the selectmen have control of their meetings to allow public input or not to allow public input. Most towns have always chose to allow public input. We have not stopped public input. We've asked the public input at this time to be sent to us via email, mail, or phone call. The constituent you're talking about is the email about public input. I would wish they would write a letter to the Board of Selectmen so we can address that further for them and possibly have the town attorney give his legal opinion that way. But it's my belief from the right to know lawyers in the conferences we've had with Mr. Sessler at the beginning of, right out to every election, we are in, we are in the right of the honor state, I mean, with all the public input and everything else.
That's the way I remember it from a couple of years.
And Liz wants to hold a pen up, so I'm going to let her give a little comment here.
And also, two months ago, in March, I think it was, the Board of Selectmen voted to suspend, temporarily suspend, the public participation policy. And it was approved, I think unanimously. So that temporarily suspended any sort of live public input. And that's why the selectmen not wanting to totally shut off, in my opinion anyway, totally shut off the public, allowed for, if, you know, the thing on the agenda were written comments or emails would be accepted.
I recall it coming from Attorney Sessler, a few years back. There was even a discussion that night, or one night, about do we not want to have public input because of a problem we were having at the time? Do we want public input? So if my constituent was to send a letter to the board about that subject, we could then submit it to Attorney Sessler again to get what he has to say about it.
Yeah, and Attorney would respond to us as the Board of Selectmen. I could respond to your...
Constituent.
Okay.
That's all on that side.
Mr. Holt, did you have something?
Yeah, basically, the Board of Selectmen's meetings are open to the public, but not necessarily for public input, unless the board wants. The public can have input at public hearings. And we have to have a public hearing once a year on our budget, so forth, the board does. Budget committee, but that's...
Move on to the next slide, number three, which is yours, Mr. Whitman.
Okay, the way that people remotely attend our meetings. I have a constituent saying that it's not clear when they attend on Zoom. And I was thinking maybe it could be on their end with the equipment that they're using at home. But then I had another constituent call me this week on a different matter. And so I had them on the phone, and I said, have you been attending our meetings on Zoom? And the person said, yes. And I said, how's it been? He says, it comes and it goes. He says, so I'm on telephone as well, because the Zoom comes and goes. So my understanding was, we're on Zoom. People can call or get us on the phone, but we still don't have a toll-free number on that, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And there was to be a third way where they could go on the website, I guess, and just click and see the meeting. Has that happened?
I hope not live yet.
Okay.
And that's coming from Josh, the IT person that just answered Bill Whitman's question. Liz?
So I would like to publicly make a comment for anyone who calls in any of those three numbers, because they would be long distance. One is welcome to submit their telephone bill for that call, and we would be happy to reimburse them for that phone call.
Which means we don't have to have an 800 number.
Right.
Right.
We can do that through the emergency management. So I don't think it's going to be that much. It would be less expensive to do it that way than to pay the upgrade fee.
For an 800.
Yeah.
Okay, so just bottom line, I'm getting told by two constituents, the Zoom comes and goes. People can attend by telephone. Still working on the third option of going on the website and clicking on and watching the meeting.
So what we need to do is possibly have a town employee, such as the department head, go on Zoom, watch one of our meetings to find out if it's coming or going. Because it could be some folks' internet that had that problem. Is that correct there, Josh?
That would be correct.
Because Josh has one on, because Josh is always on his phone. He goes in and listens to our meetings on his phone, makes sure there's no problems, then everything's running smooth. So at times when some folks have said there's been a problem, Josh has, hasn't had a problem with his own, through his own personal. So I would like to see if we could find, have an employee, maybe go on to one of our meetings and go to Zoom and listen in. Yes, Liz?
So I check with my department heads whenever they call in. I talk to them at some point. And I have heard a mixture of responses on the clarity. But I can tell you that every time somebody moves papers, it cuts out any other voices. All you hear is like this kind of stuff.
So if I want bulletin board, John, when bulletin boards to read across the papers, how are we supposed to go through?
Finally.
Finally? Josh, can't we set that up with the screen, like we do with the planning board? Let them go right on to the screen and just not talk to us? Like we do with planning board, they just call in and they're right on the screen, but they just can't talk unless they raise their hand and we, and just don't answer, don't have them talking? So they can see us, and we see them up on the screen, but that's it?
So the only thing you want to do is be able to hate them?
See them on the screen.
That's it?
Yeah.
You can walk over here right now if you want to.
I know, but they can't go on like we did at planning board. All the members went from their homes and stuff and went right up onto the screen.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they can watch the meeting and they can watch us and we can watch them.
What's the purpose?
Yeah.
So we can hold a meeting so everybody ain't in here. We had the screen.
Well, you want to stay at home and have the meetings?
Maybe, because over one meet in a week, I get tired.
Virgil's not. Virgil, let's, now, now we're not on this, Virgil, we're not on this subject yet.
What I'm saying is if you put them up on the screen, like planning board, we had Tom Barney and his daughter called in. They could watch the meeting from their house.
They also talked to you.
But they didn't have to. There was five, five or six, seven people on the screen that all could talk at any time. But he can put it in where they have to raise their hand, but we don't have to have them talking. But they can watch it through the Zoom on their computer from their house and they can see the movie.
But they're already seeing it at their home now.
Then where's the problem? Why?
This is why we have to figure out where their problem is and Josh is working on different things right now. But some people saying they have a problem Zoom. Now, there's always been all reports about Zoom in the media lately. And I think Stacy emailed you all a report about things to do or not to do for remote meetings and stuff like that, about ruffling papers, but also people have tried to hack Zoom and different things. So, but I, I don't, I don't understand why we want them here at this meeting here where they can already watch us at home.
Because we had them on a big screen. We had Diane Lane, Tom Barney, his daughter, all the planning board were all on that screen.
Because they were meeting with you.
But nobody had a problem seeing our meeting. They were watching our meeting and meeting with us.
Right, so then.
I don't think the problem is seeing it. I think the problem is hearing it.
But the people on Zoom didn't have the problem. When they're on the screen, they could hear everything fine.
But you just heard from his constituents that they said they did have a problem with Zoom cutting in and cutting out. I'm wondering if it's there.
It's on the phone.
Nope, Phil said on Zoom.
He's talking about Zoom.
On Zoom, on Zoom. Josh?
I can come up.
Sure, for a second. Yeah.
Because I mean, the planning board one worked unbelievable.
So Josh is coming up and sit with us, sir.
So just a little bit of background on video and telephone conferencing. If our internet is great, that's great because that's one step in the process. Uh, but if you, if you think about it in like a, a star, it goes out to all the other connections. So if Tom Barney had poor internet, it would be a whole nother story the other night. Uh, it would be breaking out. His video wouldn't be clear. His audio potentially wouldn't be clear. Uh, it, it's really reliant on not only our internet, but everybody that's connected in their internet. If they're having difficulties with their internet, they're gonna have difficulties seeing potentially hearing our meeting. Uh, which at that point, then we would recommend, okay, disconnect from the internet based session and call. Uh, because calling isn't over the internet, it's over the cellular towers. Um, so it's really, it really depends. Uh, it's really reliant on that individual's internet. Um, if I have a conference going and I have 15 participants and I get one caller that is saying, hey, your, your video conference is choppy, um, it's not working for me. Then the reality is because all the other participants are connected and they're not having an issue, they haven't called. Most likely that individuals having trouble with their internet. And they, they would probably do better calling it to the conference.
So we lucked out that night with everybody having great internet.
It worked great.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It, it was clear as a ballot and it was fantastic.
Oh, really? The, the, the thing here is, uh, people need to make sure that their internet is strong enough, it's capable enough to maintain uh, connectivity with Zoom so that the session goes well. If their internet is not strong enough or they're having difficulties, maybe they have old equipment at home, it's toss up.
I can say that constituent.
That's a good explanation.
I can say constituent number one, to distinguish between the two, said that, uh, they do Zoom meetings with family all over the country and never have a problem. It's only when they tune in here. And that's why I was surprised to hear a comment from a section constituent saying they, it was coming and going there.
And we have one constituent, the town administrator, well, yes, I've been having problems with my computer when they were breaking in and I recall that conversation, correct? So, and I, I don't know the question, the answer to these folks, but I, I can't see putting Zoom up there for our meetings. I, I really don't. I don't see the purpose or benefit of it.
I just didn't know if that made a difference because they all coming crystal clear. They could hear us crystal clear. We had 10, 12 people on and we didn't have a problem. Not, everything was crystal clear. And I didn't know, maybe that would make a difference.
So you're saying it could be a test to see if that's something.
See if that don't help. Because that was crystal clear. They could talk to us, we could talk to them and everything, even the meeting here was crystal clear.
Okay.
All I can say is, uh, when we kick off the Zoom session, from our systems, we're going out to Zoom. And then from my phone, I'm going out to Zoom. So I'm, I'm not bridging the gap locally and, and cheating in a sense and saying, oh, it's working great. I'm using the same connection that everybody else would be utilizing and I'm testing it out. I'm listening. At times, at times the audio drops and it's a, it's a good, maybe like a second or two seconds launch. But because it's internet based communication, it's not gonna be perfect.
Right.
Internet networks, sometimes they have latency. Sometimes the traffic takes an extra hop to get to where it needs to go and it's a little bit late. Uh, so the reality, it's not gonna be perfect, uh, but from what I've heard and, and from the several times that we've had meetings, it has been working great.
We check how many megabytes we're putting out.
Supposed, yeah, I can.
Know what I mean, just to have it? In case later on down the road that we know what we were putting out?
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay, Phil, you have any more?
No.
Anybody else have anything more at this time? All right, so we're gonna thank you, Josh, for that help. We're gonna move on to selectmen's reports at this time. Mr. Hall?
Nothing.
Mr. LaRashel?
Um, no, not this time.
Mr. Whitman?
Nothing.
Mr. McDonald?
I just wanna tell Josh, good job because the planning board meeting went really well. We did Diane Lane up on Alt Mountain for the, um, wedding venue hall for her barn and stuff up at the farm. She's got a big farm up there. It's gorgeous.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. So today, gentlemen, I'll just go on just really, just a few highlights. I don't take much time. So town administrator, me and her reported. Today, the emergency management meeting today, the management team decided to wait till next Friday to hear what the new governor's orders are going to be before making any more changes of to the directives that the emergency management team handed out throughout the community. The porta potties were put down in the bay. Two of them have been moved over to the western side of the public restroom because this weekend they were used so much, the odor got, um, a little bit unbearable for the drive in there. The food place. And they didn't move them over. They much appreciated first. Um, lots of stuff to coming up and moving mobile. Everything went well in the bay. There was discussion, talk of possibly getting some more containers of rubbish because this morning down at the bay, it was totally full and overrun. The parking lot guy was down there this morning at 6:30 when I came down, quarter after 6:00, picking up the trash. The new gentleman, he was walking right up to the parking lot, full hand and bags and grabbing everything, which was great. It was nice to see. Big day tables, they're all over moved over between the gazebo and pops now. That's working well. Emergency sponder stipend, that will be addressed later in the town administrator's reports. Memorial Day right now, there will be no parade. There will be no ceremonies out on the front, um, monument square here. But we are asking possibly citizens of the town, maybe do a slight or small decorations in honor of veterans and a memorial day itself. A flag, maybe a new flag on your house, maybe a pallet painted to the marriage flag. Or just saying thank you to a better, maybe even a yellow ribbon wrapped around a pole. Remember that years ago? During the Gulf War, people were putting yellow ribbons around. Um, that would be a nice thought, um, just to show our pride and our thanks for the folks that gave up their lives for us so many years ago. Moving on, the whole home wing committee features, school graduations. I'm sure you noticed all the signs at the traffic service this morning. The school did a spectacular job putting all those photos out and sign out, congratulating our seniors in the town. I give them kudos for just doing what they did. It just looks spectacular. Levy Park, we'd already discussed that today. All the home wing facilities, we are still holding off until we hear about the governor's orders come Friday. I did ask for the fire chief, for the police chief to speak at next Monday's night meeting about everything leading up to the governor's orders next Friday, a week from Friday. And then the fire chief and police chief will be in Monday, the following Monday night's meeting, which I believe will be the seven nights, seven days from now, it's 25th, so it'll be right around the first of June, I believe it'll be that meeting there. And the fire chief, police chief will be in to tell, tell us about the new governor's orders and how we're gonna be maybe even opening better or not better. This weekend's gonna be a real test to our community, our fire department, police department. We've all seen how busy we are on weekends now when the weather is fabulous. Well, right now, they're taking a pretty good weekend for us. The weather from here on out is gonna be nice, I hope. I just hope to be thankful that we don't have a spike in anything after this weekend because so many people are gonna infiltrate our area. Route 11 west side, the water has been turned on today. So Sandy Point will probably be opening here soon. All the summer cottages will be open. So I just hope folks that come to visit our community, that stay at our places around the lake will be kind and pleasant. We've all been in this together and hopefully the citizens of Alton will be the same as they always have into this whole thing, polite and consider of their fellow neighbors.
Should, should be that, how graduation is gonna be.
The drive in?
Yeah.
The graduation for the seniors, uh, from the elementary school and the high school will be happening. It'll be done in the parking lot of Prospect Mountain High School. The only ones that are requested to be there are immediate family. Uh, and then there will be a drive through town parade, a small parade of the seniors. Probably led either by the fire department. I don't know if the police cruiser is gonna be involved, but the fire department will be. So when you do see it, maybe come out and just wave to them because this is a different class this year of not having traditional graduation.
Are we gonna have town departments, um, like the tax and recs and stuff, are they gonna do something for Memorial Day? Just leave it out front for the weekend or?
After the, after the emergency management meeting, I think it was an idea of Ryan, Chief Ryan Heath was gonna mention to go out and hold the park and see if they would do something, put something else up. I know my store is, uh, the silhouette was done today. It's just gonna be cut out tomorrow. Hopefully painted. Hopefully get ahold of Mr. Gedney and maybe I can see if he can bring down his army jeep to put down front with barricades around it just inserted. But we can all just do a little something, just to say thank and say we still support them. That would be great. Is that jammed, yes, sir?
A week from today is Memorial Day. Are we meeting?
A week from today is Memorial Day, more a holiday. Are we meeting? It's a holiday, we will not be meeting.
Okay, so that means the emergency team won't be meeting on that.
On Monday, either, no, because it's holiday. And I thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
Are we gonna meet on Tuesday or are we gonna pass on the meeting for next week?
To, to morning.
Okay, so at this time on my report, I'm gonna ask you folks, do you feel you need to meet next Tuesday or do you want to pass?
I don't know. I'd like to give Liz a thanks for having some good agenda today. Do more things on it.
You guys helped too. So I, I want to know, you folks want to meet next Tuesday or want to take the week off and wait till the June 1st? Let's play for June 1st.
Yeah.
We, we, we don't have anything pending.
Let's play for June 1st.
Well, we don't know, and we don't know until me and her talk to, we'll be able to.
Anything that's pressing, but you think needs to be put out.
No, but on June 1st, there will be some.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So will there be no selectmen's meeting next Monday due to the Memorial Day holiday? We will not be next week.
I know.
The only, the only emergency management meeting will be a week, will be one on that Thursday.
So Monday, there won't be Tuesday?
There will not be Tuesday, no, sir. Not unless I hear from Liz differently.
Or is this coming Monday or a week from this coming?
Oh, this Monday.
But just to clarify, the person that would be at the Thursday meeting should be, well, we're not having the emergency team on Monday.
Correct.
So the, the, aside from you, the select board person that was supposed to be at that meeting should be at the Thursday meeting.
Yeah.
If we keep that rotation going.
This Thursday is for LaRashel. Okay, because Virgil wanted to meet today. This tour shall be this Thursday. Next Monday would have been Bob.
So Bob.
Bob would go on Thursday, yeah.
Okay.
Unless.
Because I come up after that, so that'll be the following Monday and I'll make arrangements to be able to do that.
Okay, as long as you make arrangements.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, oh, oh, hang on. This is my report, gentlemen. You guys already had your.
I'll get any more.
Okay, yes, sir.
It's about Memorial Day.
Yes, sir.
Did you or anyone speak to Liz or yourself on, from the American Legion?
The police chief has. Ryan Heath has been in contact with them. Uh, who's the commander over there?
Uh, yes.
He has been in contact with him. Uh, the police chief has been discussing.
Take one of them.
He's not quite sure if it's all gonna come together for him over at the Legion.
At the Legion itself, because I know one of them was, uh, Bruce Cornish was also a contact person over there. And I was curious as to know what they were gonna do. Haven't talked to them yet. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Hall?
My, uh, emergency manager meeting Monday, I was supposed to attend that one, right? It's coming up.
Monday, it would have been, yeah.
Okay, so I'm on for the next Monday?
Oh, well, Thursday. Thursday. A week from Thursday.
Okay.
Phil's giving, yeah, Phil's moving out his spot one more.
Yeah, so I'll be following Monday.
Okay, we got it all straight. Anything else, gentlemen? All right, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to town administrator for her report, which she has quite a long one.
I do, sorry.
I gotta ruffle my papers though, is that all right?
So the first item is the revenue report. I asked the finance, you know, I think the board has the finance manager. To explain to you, any questions you have about this report, which you did have questions last week. Does any questions about any of the reports that you received today at your seat?
Hi Laura, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. How are you?
Wonderful. Thanks for joining us tonight.
No problem.
Yes, the first question we have for you, this McDonald actually had it last week and I couldn't explain it to him good enough, but she did explain it to me, so I'm gonna let you explain it to him. He's gonna ask his question. So I'm gonna turn it over to him now. Mr. McDonald?
I gotta find the report.
Well, basically it had to do with parentheses and.
Yes.
Now.
We've got the, what the balance is in there. And then you've got balance collected and then balance in parentheses, uncollected.
Do you wish I might mine?
I don't know why I did with it. Probably handed it to you. You probably got two. I put that stuff on one and sure as I come in. On the, you have current year revenues. The first one, property taxes say is $28,783.85. And the balance uncollected is $28,783.85.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You're talking too loud.
Yeah, it's, don't talk loud.
So what is it? Have we collected that much or haven't we collected it?
The current year revenues is what you collected for the month of the report. So for this report, it is April, which is the 7,894. Then because you don't have a budgeted number, that's why it's in parentheses and the percentage left are zeros. Because you don't budget for your revenue like you do for your expenditures. So your current year to date revenues is the 28,783. That's year to date. And it just puts it in parentheses because you're starting with zero. That's all.
So the balance uncollected, just get rid of that line? Get rid of that whole row?
Yeah, it's just gonna copy the one before because you're starting with the current year budget of zero.
All right, so balance uncollected, there's no aisle at all. Just get rid of it.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, no, that's a lie.
Right at the beginning of the meeting. Remember, I handed it to you. You said, let me look at it.
That's all a young brother.
Thank you.
Anything else for Laura? Laura, thank you for hanging on tonight with us and we hope that, I think that's all we need from you unless Liz has something else.
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
We thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura. And enjoy the week and have a nice holiday weekend.
Thank you. Goodnight, board.
Thank you, Laura.
All right.
She ended this in her office. I was just waiting for that.
Yes.
I was here to move her up.
So the next time I was at the sidewalk in front of the village, just over on Main Street, um, I did speak to two different people at DOT, one in Concord, one in Gilford. And they both said the same thing. I, I sent you out an email on this.
Yes.
So they would not be able to share any expense of the sidewalk area grinding and repaping. Their funds are specifically designated and their policies indicate they do not work on or around sidewalks. And we've known that for many years. on or around sidewalks, and we've known that for many years. They do, however, update the handicap ramp areas that are at the edge of a sidewalk that go plant down to a road, as an example. And what would be needed from them would be a trench permit that we would need to apply for in order to do this work. So that's, that's the answer for you from DOT.
Or just go dig it out, because they don't ask for our permits.
So Mr. Roberts is, I believe, went up and outlined that whole area. Do you know if he got a cost back or an estimate back on that yet?
I, I have not seen a cost on that. GMI did the pink.
Yeah, pink and white lines, yeah. Can I bring Mr. Roberts back on? Don't you report, but?
Yes, sir. So GMI is, GMI actually has a proposal for that. To cold plan the area is two thousand eight hundred dollars, and we're talking about that entire area, all the way over to sidewalk to sidewalk, concrete sidewalk to sidewalk. Also, to put a two-inch binder, of course, and the machine method, approximately, approximately cost is gonna be about seventy-three tons, six thousand seventy-nine dollars seventy-five cents. Total cost to do that whole area is eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine seventy-five.
Good, is that, is that bringing it all the way down to the gravel again? Kinda making sure there's a good base in there?
Well, that's the idea of cold planting it, because it doesn't look like there's a lot of pavement there to begin with. So they cold plant it straight down to where they start seeing gravel, and then when they start seeing gravel, they kinda stop. There might be a thin layer left, but we know it's gonna be super thick on the state roadside, so they're gonna trim that, so it just blends in to the state road itself. And you're right, when they're gonna need a permit from that, from Dave Silva.
All right, the, because, I mean, just within the two weeks, we've talked about it, three weeks, talked about it, it's just gotten worse with the cold patching and everything else. It's actually breaking down even quicker now, the rest of it. Mr. McDonald has a question for you.
Kenny, when they, they grind that, are they gonna put a vibrator there and pound it back tight underneath it before we pave?
Oh, yeah, it's tight underneath it, actually, you know, just nothing hasn't been done to that area, well, since I've been here. I've been here twenty-six years, so you're basically just getting rid of the old dried-out pavement and pulling it out of there, and then we're ready to go. You know, we're ready to go and put a good, a good coat right across the whole thing, so.
Are we gonna check it to make sure it's tight?
Oh, yeah, Warren will do that. Warren Colby is our, our paver, he makes sure it gets done right.
Yeah, because when that, when that's so broke up, the truck's going over, it doesn't necessarily tighten up.
No, he'll get that out completely, he'll be pounded in pretty good. His only thing was, is that they may have to do half and half, and I already talked about, we'll, we'll give them a little bit of assistance by putting road closed signs at the top and bottom, and actually closing that whole section down. And that's something we'll have to coordinate, or I'll have you coordinate with Ruth Ann about customers going in and out of the store. Might be a little difficult while they're cold planting it, until they get the pavement down.
They were willing to shut the store down to get it done.
Yes, I agree, so.
They prefer.
Yep, so we'll just have to coordinate that on the day you do it.
Mr. Roberts, are you gonna send us a proposal on paper, the total cost of this project, and then where should, payment should come out of, whether it should come out of the sidewalk? Capital reserve fund, that has thirty-nine thousand fifty-two dollars in it, so that wouldn't hurt it. I'd just hate to see if they get out of road reconstruction money, only because we need every bit of money you can have right now to do all the roads you wanna do, am I right?
There's another possibility, and that would be the municipal aid that we're supposed to receive this year, the one hundred and sixty-five thousand. That way you wouldn't have to dip into the capital reserve fund.
But wouldn't it be better to take that to help pay taxes and everything else this year, and insurances that it says we can use it for, and take it out of the capital reserve for the sidewalks that's there for that thing, and you save that money in case we don't get all our tax money and everything? That we've got enough money?
So my question is, do you folks need a written proposal from Mr. Roberts on this for record, or? You do, okay. List us. So Ken, if we get this done, I guess it's not gonna get done until June 1st. When do you think the earliest would be done, to have this done?
I'd have to check with GMI, when they can schedule us in to have that ripped up and done.
Okay, sir.
And then we'll have to coordinate it with the village store to make sure they're gonna be closed, and we'll give them some assistance as far as closing everything down to keep traffic away from them while they do it, so they can do it as quick as possible.
Yeah, because they were gonna close and, and do cleaning inside. They said why, why, why you do the sidewalk, but can't we make a motion that he can set it up on schedule, and Liz can bring in the total cost, because he's got eighty-eight, seventy-nine, seventy-five? And then we can keep, get this thing rolling and get it on the, get it on their planning?
Bruce, how do you feel about that? He wants, he wants Kenny to go ahead and call GMI and get the schedule so we can do it.
And then you all get the paperwork, but you don't have to wait for another meeting, that you can give them the permission to say, yeah.
All right, go ahead and talk, just kept getting interrupted.
I, I'm okay with that, because it's been announced on record, how much it will be, the paper that will just back it up and everything, and it would help move the project forward, since it does seem to be deteriorating.
All right, Ken, can you give me that total cost again? Eight thousand?
Eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Make a motion that we allow Liz to get paperwork from Kenny, and allow Kenny to set up to redo the crosswalk by Jenny Pack.
Jenny Pack to across the village store to the other side?
Yes.
Do I have a second, and for the amount of money, eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents?
I, in my motion, I'd like to put nine thousand, just to, for one, to even it off and give them a little play in there, just in case.
Yeah, and I, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, again, this is a proposal, you know, after they grind it, if they have to go down another half an inch, it's still gonna be a little bit more pavement, but that's the basis that he based it on. And, you know, if he has to go another half an inch, I wouldn't say we're gonna stop right there, we're gonna grind out whatever's needed, and make sure it goes back in level.
You have an idea on what it could possibly be, the worst scenario?
Um, no, if they have to another, add another half an inch to it or so, I mean, you know, right now they're basing it on a little over two inches of good binder that's gonna, that's gonna go in there to seal it all up. And again, I guess it's just one of those things, it's just, until we grind it out, we don't know what the state or the store put in there, because they searched their records back to nineteen seventy-one, and there's no records for any permits there, so they have no record of anything, the state.
This from seventy-five required driveway permit.
Right, so, you know, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna do the best we can to make sure it all works, and we'll deal with, I'll deal with Dave Silva tomorrow morning and call him and see if I can get him out there to take a look at it and get the permit immediately, and then we'll have to, I'll give a heads up to Warren that we need to be thrown into the schedule.
Okay, I want to put on my motion, eight thousand eight hundred and eight thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, just rounds it off.
For one, you're gonna reach nine thousand. Liz is gonna recommend that you should make your motion say ten thousand.
Ten thousand, that's what I mean, to have enough in there to. All right, I make a, make a motion to allow Kenny to give Liz the paperwork, to allow him to have GMI put us on the schedule to grind the crosswalk in front of village store between the sidewalk and Jenny Pack, and to escrow the ten thousand dollars for it to have it fixed.
From the sidewalk fund.
I have a second. I have a second. Any further discussion? Kevin?
Yes, sir. I have a problem voting in favor that Ken, without a written proposal put in front of me. I'm in favor of doing it, don't get me wrong, but this is the first we've heard of it tonight, of any kind of proposal, and in order for me to vote in favor of it, I, I have to have a written proposal. Any further discussion?
Call the board to vote. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. LaChalle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Holt?
No.
Voters in the affirmative for the one, one against. Thank you, Ken.
Yes, sir.
Written proposal, if you can get one to Mr. Holt, though, that would be nice, because I know he does wanna see it, and I understand why he would not vote for it, I do understand that. All right, and I guess we're gonna move on to another one you're gonna have to talk about.
Rumble strip guideline, draft guidelines, Ken.
Yeah, as far as the proposal go, I actually have it in hand, so I'll make sure it gets up to the town administrator tomorrow.
Thank you, Ken. So Ken, this next item on the TA report is rumble strip, draft guidelines.
Do we have paperwork on it?
You have, yes.
We just got it tonight, though.
Yeah, I have a. This is the state's guidelines, not ours. So Mr. Roberts can tell you about it, a little bit of the lights, or Liz can?
Mr. Roberts, Ken.
Mr. Roberts, Ken, Mr. Roberts.
Great, may, Mike Dugus is in charge, Michael Dugus is in charge of this, and I've had several discussions with him, he sent me this, this is the state guidelines that came out. And in state guidelines, it basically says that the end of apron is when they'll stop or start the rumble strips. I have an issue with that, and basically, a letter that he sent me shows that I suggested fifty feet from end of that. I still stand by that. What I'd like to do is get a consensus of the board, and if you could allow Liz to actually put a letter together on behalf of the board, and we can send it to Mike Dugus and say that our suggestion is, is fifty feet from the end of aprons, and then people won't be driving over the end of it, either entering or exiting. And I've talked to several engineers of the state about this, they, they basically agree with me. You know, this is a fifty-five mile an hour zone in most places, forty miles an hour down by the, down by the Legion, and people are, don't wanna take a complete stop and take a left-hand turn, so they start turning a little bit early, and they're riding over the end of the rumble strips. So fifty feet is a reasonable request, and if I can get the board of selectmen to back me with it, I'll create a letter as all, as well, and we can send both of them to DES, and maybe they'll consider resetting the rumble strips back fifty feet from the end of apron.
This is for your request, you have to.
I, and I wholeheartedly agree with you, and I think we should write a letter and say, you know, if anything, you didn't listen to us from all our requests from all of the last five years dealing with this. The least you could do is at least on this request of doing the fifty foot, because you take Roberts' old campground, that doesn't leave much apron to apron, you take twenty-eight hole for a hill road. I have to agree, if it didn't mean, I wholeheartedly agree to the letter. He jokes.
And I think, and I, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we originally agree, or we didn't really agree? We didn't want to run the rumble strips together with, weren't they supposed to be mumble strips?
They are mumble, well, they are mumble strips. Ken, they're still supposed to be mumble strips, correct?
Yeah, they, they, there's a different name for them, but yeah, they're a very low volume, it's similar what they, they put down in Barnstead, and if you drive on them, you'll find out, they're about a third of the sound, if not less, but the vibration inside of the vehicle is as much, so it gives you notification that you're leaving the lane, or whatever it is. I mean, they're not the most perfect things in the world, but they are two-thirds better than what we have here in Alton.
That's it.
Mr. McDonald?
The, the state on this has done nothing but lied to us anyways. It's all they've done. But Kenny, would you say over by Legion West Body?
Yeah, it drops to forty miles an hour when it comes down there, and what I tried to do is, I've tried a couple of different scenarios, like, okay, the speed limit tells you how far you need to put it back from the apron, so fifty-five miles an hour is fifty-five feet from end of apron. And at forty miles an hour, it's supposed to be forty feet from end of apron, but it, they don't have a standard. The only standard they came out with, which is in that document that you have, it says at the end of apron, well, if you look at that, that's, that's a little better, but it's definitely not what's needed. I think the, because of the speed, they need to reevaluate this for the entire state.
Also changed it, changed their guidelines here, because the ones I got at the house are at forty-five and greater, and they put it down to forty.
Yes, I think they.
They've changed guidelines from when we've had the hearings with them to now. But they still, they got it right in front of the Legion anyways, they got it going right across the driveway down there.
Liz, they, they didn't date their amendment date, issue date.
Any other questions on the rumble strips? Besides a letter, I'll take a consensus on the board to send a letter. Our concern is about fifty foot. Yes, Mr. Roberts. Virgil?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Ruben, yes. Consensus is, there's still a letter going.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna look here a little bit for you, Mr. Roberts, I think we can let you go off the phone now.
Okay, I'll still be listening, thank you.
All right, Liz?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Ken, have a good night.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Administrator, your back.
Your next report.
Yes, this is for the, this is for the entire board, but specifically you, because you brought this up at the last meeting about the, the miltoil chemical.
Yeah.
So the areas that will be treated are posted by the contractor with standard signage to warn of any restrictions if there, finish, if there are any. The herbicide being used does not have the same restrictions as the previous herbicide that was used. This means the beaches should not be closed. Solitude is the contractor, and that work is noted in their contract, so they will post on land that will be completed, and Kelly will also notify the miltoil committee to make sure that they ensure that the posting is done. So it's a different herbicide we, we heard about this last fall with the grant process.
I'd also like to make sure that they don't do it on Fourth of July weekend or something, and have signs sitting there when people come to swim in the lake, because I know I wouldn't let my kids swim with the herbicides that this government says won't hurt you, because they have no idea until ten years from now.
So is that a board decision?
They should not be doing it on Fourth of July or on our holiday weekends, because that's what they did to us the last time, and they had to shut down the swim docks, the beaches, everything, through the Fourth of July weekend.
We can find out probably when they have the schedule, because they should be notifying, at least it's not to be till.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's common sense.
That should be, at least two weeks.
Be it Kelly on the phone?
Oh, you're busy. Liz, you gotta log in for it tonight.
I do.
We keep dragging it on.
Hi Kelly, are you there?
I am here, yes.
For Kelly, sorry, Kelly.
Thanks for joining us, even though you didn't want to. Uh, Mr. McDonald has concerns that this miltoil company might come in during Fourth of July weekend, and he wants to make sure that this is not gonna be happening. I was wondering if you could find out from the miltoil company when they might have this scheduled to be done.
I did inform them of the request not to be treating for the holiday weekend, and that has been noted. They had said possibly the end of June, but with that information, not the holiday weekend, that will definitely be held to.
And not a few days before the holiday weekend? Like, that's what we did the last time.
This is a different herbicide.
It doesn't matter.
He doesn't trust the government.
I don't trust any herbicide.
Look at this, look at this, John Colvin, he doesn't.
No herbicide, but they have no idea what it does yet.
I'm sorry, Kelly, so you'll do your best to make sure this doesn't happen two days before Fourth of July, correct?
Yes, I will send them information that would say do not treat between this day and that day. So it could be between June thirtieth and July eighth or whatever. I'll look at the calendar and see what the dates would be.
That would be bad news.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I think that's all we need you for. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Town administrator, I'll let you keep moving on here.
Okay, so you have at your seat a motion. So um, it's in red at the top. Don't go by the one in the binder. That's been amended. Yep.
What you gentlemen want to do is we kind of approved it last week, but needs to be redone.
Yeah, I move to approve the acceptance of the municipality relief fund known as Gopher. Is that right?
Yep.
Held by the state of New Hampshire, up to the maximum of a hundred and twenty-six thousand body dollars. And to also approve the acceptance of the emergency responder stipend program, hazardous pay in the amount of sixty-one thousand nine twenty-eight fifty-seven. Twenty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-eight fifty-seven for the fire department first responders. And thirty-four thousand eight hundred for the police department first responders. Read the explanation, Tom.
I don't have the motion.
Now, I get questions.
Second? Second. Open for discussion.
All right. The sixty, just pick our uh, fire, fire, fire department, thirty-four thousand eight hundred. That's all we're using for fire department. That's it.
Twenty-six thousand, I learned twenty fifty-seven dollars for a fire department. Thirty-four thousand, and for.
Yeah, right. So that's all we're using for fire department. That's it. We're not gonna say, okay, this one on, and we think we gotta use the sixty-one thousand.
I don't know what's gonna happen down the road quite frankly. There may be another wave of the CARES Act that falls through.
Yeah, not what we collect. I'm just saying on this one.
For this particular eight weeks and two days, that's what this is for.
Okay, the sixty-one thousand. Are we gonna continue to pay him out of this CARES Act until we use up the a hundred and twenty-six body? Or are we taking the sixty-one thousand and not putting it aside and they only get to the eight weeks? That's it. I know. I'll bother.
There are three phases submitted for reimbursements of the one twenty-six forty, which is the first phase is June first. And there's additional allocation, twenty-five million CARES Act. So the first phase is up to a hundred and twenty-six thousand forty dollars for the alt, for alt, if I'm reading this right. So all we can get up to a hundred and twenty-six thousand for the first phase, the June first. We're only gonna expend the twenty-six, sixty-one thousand nine hundred twenty dollars fifty-seven cents. The second phase, we can go in for another allotment. And the third phase, we can go in for another allotment. My understanding of this from last week when we were discussing emergency management.
But when we discussed the emergency management, if this went on till August, we were gonna pay out of this fund without another one coming down the road. And that's why I'm asking if we're gonna stop and only pay him the eight weeks at the twenty-six thousand nine twenty-eight fifty-seven, or are we gonna continue to pay him more than the eight weeks? Because we're going back to March. So you're gonna pay him March and April, and we've got May, June, July.
May, June, and then July and August. So that's it.
Right. But are we gonna continue to pay the first responders? Or are we only gonna use up the twenty-six thousand nine twenty-eight and the thirty-four thousand eight hundred?
That's what this is.
That's what this is right now. This is the only thing right now being brought to the board to approve, which matches last week. It's just the wording is different according to the requirement.
Well, we were told that we were gonna use the hundred and twenty-six body for the first responders.
Which we aren't. A hundred and twenty-six thousand forty is coming out of March, April, about one twenty-six. Six, we're using sixty-one thousand. After the Gopher fund, the Gopher account is done, you're gonna move into the CARES Act. That's two different accounts. My understanding of this was right at the meeting. So there's more money available there. So May and June, we, because you're gonna see that first responders increase them for May and June because everything's getting busier. And then July and August.
All right, so wait.
So so the motion is to approve that one hundred and twenty-six and sixty-one is coming out of that, even though it's being funded through a different method. It's confusing.
But we're gonna.
Everyone's getting confused by.
Oh, we're putting the sixty-one thousand nine twenty-eight fifty-seven, putting that away and that's the tax to pay their, whatever they have to pay. And we're not just gonna spend it.
No, no, it has to go just to the response. That's it.
Just as your motion.
Funders, then the sixty-one thousand nine twenty-eight is their money, not ours. Who's money? You just said the sixty-one nine twenty-eight.
It's slated to the police department, the fireman, the EMTs.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the twenty-six.
Being reimbursed for it. Well, it's being reimbursed by that. It's our reimbursement. We get.
So same motion you did last week.
That's right. But last week I was told we were gonna pay it all, the hundred and twenty-six thousand. I'm wondering, what are we doing with the rest of the money?
With the rest of the hundred and twenty-six thousand, we could use for other things, such as PPE and.
Well, that's why I'm asking, who's got the right to spend it or put it where they want?
So anything to do with the state of emergency is, this will help.
Emergency management team.
Yeah.
Emergency management director. Then we'll go into May and June for your second phase, July and August.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So we don't have a right to hang on to the six, sixty thousand or whatever's there. It goes to the emergency management team and they spend that.
It's gonna go, no, we authorize the expenditures to pay in the fire department, the police objects. There's extra money there. If they come in, they say, I need more PPE, we have that money for it.
So who is authorized to spend it? Us or them?
The selectmen.
All right.
The select.
I know, but. I know, but that's why I wanna make sure where the money's going and who has the right.
They're still controlling the first.
Before we say okay.
It's spelled out in the motion.
You're still.
It's about that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, I'll poll the board, Mr. Holt.
All right.
Yes. You have another question?
Yeah, I wanted to add to my motion. That the rest of the money not be spent until it comes in front of this board.
You can't, this motion has to be, this is the reason it's written this way is Laura had to bring it back to us because they would not accept it the other way.
So now you're saying that it doesn't have to come in front of the board? Because if it ain't in the motion, then it doesn't have to come in front of this board.
I don't see it. If you change this motion, it's possible we will not get this one.
I think it would have to be. Motion has to be made exactly how it's written.
It's like, it's like we did last week.
Well, if we did it last week, why we go back again?
There was nothing wrong with the wording of it. That's why it got returned. It's just like the motion for the um, the highway side that we wanted. We had to make that motion specifically to a certain way.
Yeah, and to me, they should have with selectmen to expend it.
Right, so we will note it.
So there will be more things coming to the board of selectmen for these emergency type expenditures.
They should.
And more motions will be coming forward. I.
And they should have on them to have the selectmen expend. That way it seals it.
Are you changing your motion?
I, no, you said I can't. But that way it seals these, so it can't go into different people's budgets or anything else. Because if you don't put that in there, then we've got our faith and it can go to emergency management and go anywhere without us.
All this, all this, all this money is gonna be coming forth through the emergency management department.
So that means they got the right to expend it?
No.
No.
It has to go through this office first.
Yeah.
I will bring your concerns to fire, to police chief on uh, Thursday.
Has he come to us to expend emergency money yet?
No, because he hasn't had to, because his emergency director, as is he is the police chief, so he can expend it.
Okay, so it makes no difference. He can spend this too.
Money is not going into his fund. It's going into the general fund at this point, is my understanding. It goes into the general fund. The emergency management fund will show that it has been over expended over the course of the year. This funding is always only to reimburse the town for the funds it's expended.
Yeah, and it has, it must be related to the state of emergency, otherwise it will not receive reimbursement.
All right, I'll leave my motion.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald. Mr. Rochelle seconded. Any further discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. Vote is affirmative. Four, four, one against.
Thank you.
Uh, ma'am, we're supposed to keep the agenda short here and I did on my end.
Well, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Instead of being on the agenda, the TA reports is getting bigger and bigger. It should be in the agenda so we can study it first.
A couple of these things have just come up, but. Okay.
Just come up. It'd be three, four days ago.
Next one, ma'am.
All right, um, you have a copy of an email at your seat from the solid waste director in regards to the recycling of cardboard. The recycling revenues have skyrocketed recently. And the superintendent there is recommending that the selectmen, um, I guess, get rid of or void or leave the cardboard, um, now you, you previously said no more recycling of cardboard.
Reorganize.
The contamination.
Right, but there wasn't pain.
Right.
Right, and that was the problem. It was costing us.
Yeah, so he, you know, in your email, you'll see that he's going to reorganize the location on site where the cardboard is dropped off. His staff now has proper PPE and will be using it and he's recommending that the recycling of cardboard begin again. So I just need an approval from the board.
And we're sure that we're gonna have the gloves and everything on those people because it lives on cardboard for three days. And we're, you know what I mean? We're gonna mandatory whatever they have it, when they handle it.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as they give the, the public a week and a half notice that they're gonna do it. Just to turn the switch on saying you gotta recycle now after we told them we weren't gonna recycle. I don't think it's right. They should give them proper notice at least a week.
If we put up a sign through the weekend up there and then start it next weekend, start it next weekend. And then some people aren't gonna see sign and and we're gonna have.
All right, you need to at least put a sign up that recycling of cardboard will start on June, on, on May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
Yeah, you both have a problem with that. Oh, sounds good. I have a motion to that effect that we will restart recycling cardboard.
I make a motion that we allow Scotty to start recycling cardboard and to have him put up a sign to tell the public that he will start it in a week or so.
You're gonna start on five-thirty, which is a Saturday, or five-twenty-nine?
Start on that Friday, possibly.
And we open up five-twenty-nine and recycle that party.
Yeah, and you, and he'll understand that. He knows he's gonna get a few that didn't see the sign or whatever around him. So it's.
But we need at least put it up there.
Yes, yeah.
My motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald, to start recycling cardboard on May twenty-ninth. At the solid waste, solid transfer station. Second, my Mr. Holt. Any further discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. Holt.
Yes, we need the income.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. Vote is in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Five, four.
Thank you. The next item is, um, you asked for this to come back to you. You have a map at your seat. It has to do with Mr. Bell, um, the farmer's market vendor vending his farm products. And um, you asked that myself and the code enforcement officer come up with some kind of a decision on, as to the location where he could park in the bay. And you have it in front of you. And then Ruben, you kind of wanted to add to that.
I'm trying not to shuffle my papers.
I got a question here.
Yes, sir.
Those two parking areas beside that are for first responders, for the fire truck and ambulance. If we have emergency or anything down there, you don't think we should move him down a little or on the other side of that, on the other side of the gazebo? So you don't have tables or whatever in there with vegetables where that is.
I think you have to be selling out of his truck, but.
Well, you always sell out of the truck, but.
Well, he's only gonna be there s- um, if I remember.
Three hours.
Three hours on Wednesday and Saturdays, correct?
Right. But those designated.
Those are designated, but they're only here until July weekend, on the July third when they're having the fireworks. They're not parked down there on the regular Saturday. They're not parked down there on the regular Wednesday. I had talked to Liz, possibly making the one, two, three, four, five spots in front of the gazebo where the farmers could sell their fruits or their labor. The other discussion I had with Liz about this, I don't want somebody coming in and say, well, I wanna sell my crafts out of there.
Right, so that's right.
So the board has to look at how they wanna set up this. And we're gonna have to amend the policy of she doesn't call it, harkers and vendors. Situations. That's not even sound, right?
More than other people.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. So the board has to come up and say, how many spots are you gonna allow for farmers to sell their fruits or their labor? So do we do five? Because Mr. Bell might not see the only one that comes in. Who's gonna regulate it? Thirdly is, if you're only gonna allow five, then do you hold a waiting? So say, we're only allowing five, that's it. We're not doing it anymore. And that, if someone backs out at, after they've been there a year or six months, they don't wanna do it anymore, we call the next person line. But we don't open up the whole bay of the farmer's market.
To me, he should be up on the lawn, not out of the truck, where traffic is pulling in and out, everything else. He should be up on the lawn. Because we wouldn't allow anybody to do it out of a vehicle down there and be where traffic goes.
Well, that, that's fine too. I don't mind, but we have to amend the policy if we're gonna do it. Plus, if you remember, his application has the waiting have to fee because he's only gonna be there two days a week for three hours each time. He's not going down for a whole day. He's not going down every Saturday and Sunday for full-time. So I think one more discussion's gotta go into this, how we wanna do it. I'd like to see you gentlemen go back. And look at this for the next week now, because you're gonna have two weeks now, this week and next week. I have a meeting for June first. Situations for the town administration. Because if you have one.
I think that grass area should be able to be used for.
And take the map with you and you'll see the code enforcement officer and my recommendation on one of the others.
The reason I said in front of the gene sleeve on the parking spots is plenty of turnoff on the breakdown. So if they combed it off on the weekend at the conference simulation, you come back to just before the first responders designated parking. If you cone that off, people can park on both sides towards spots and towards public restrooms. They have plenty of parking. That area would be coned off from traffic. People could come in, they could sell off the back of their truck very easily instead of being on the lawn, which we lose our grass if we have stuff like this on the lawn. And you wouldn't have this Phil backing in the other way and going back and forth across the sidewalk, pulling his goods up. We'd be right there at the end of his tailgate. At least that's what I.
You'd be at the end of the tailgate and people walking up would be out in traffic.
No, sir. No, sir, because that breakdown lane before you go in and park is much wider.
But where people are parking and stuff, we don't even let people walk in here usually without, if they're selling stuff, we're worried about traffic and everything else.
I still say if we combed it off every weekend, combed it off, they would be fine. The board doesn't wish that. Board doesn't wish that, but all I'd like to do is have you guys look at it for the next two weeks, come back on to you with your recommendations.
And I don't think anything should be combed off. I think it should become first served right down through there.
But you still gotta designate a place where you're gonna put it back.
Yeah.
And you feel as though the best place would be with gazebo. I feel, yes, because that has the smallest parking areas. The town looks at changing the policy of vendors, because the town outlawed all vendors down in the bay. But I would say.
Well, that was over.
But anyways, they all bought it. This way here, you're designated one, two, three, four, five, five spots for, for farmers to have a farmer's market. It'll be on a first come, first served basis. And then you keep a waiting list. So after, say, five, if Virgil McDonald decided, well, I tried it for two months, I'm not gonna do it anymore, we call the next guy in line. There's a waiting list. We don't open up twenty parking spots for a farmer's market.
If I did, I'd be there all day, every day.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think you've got the right idea. Uh, we're gonna call it a farmer's market. This is the area for them. And if.
That's right.
There's only one right now. And usually, the farmers have an organization and they belong to it. And they create this farmer's market and, but we, we go with that. Put down so many, so many parking spaces.
That's it.
Designated for the farmer's market for those two days, or whatever days we think is best. And when it fills up, it fills up and that's it.
I don't think you, we should be closing down parking spots for the farmer's market. You've got enough public parking. It doesn't matter. You've got enough public parking. It's a private person selling his goods on town property. Now you're designating town parking spots.
So, you know, this can be tweaked. This is the first time thing. Whatever the decision is, this can be tweaked as we, as the town votes along to.
We're one of the only towns around us that does not have a farmer's market.
That's right. Oh, you can, you can put a three-sided shed right down that grass mark there and put them right in.
So all I'm asking you, if you folks will look at it next week, Monday night, come back, we tweak it Monday night. Because if we keep kicking this, this is all I think. So if we don't work on it, the season's gonna be by for anybody's gonna make fruits and their vegetables. But I, I would, I myself, I'm entertaining the idea that no crafters are involved.
No.
Only on our farmer's market, raise the fruits of their labor.
Farm products.
Farm products.
But we, might also, Mr. Chairman, look around town for another area, which I did. I, I was thinking about like, I'll be back at a league, something like that. You know, I'm.
Well, the problem is, when you're selling produce and stuff like that, you wanna be in the busiest area there is and that's, that's probably a problem. And years ago, years ago, me and my wife stayed at that wayside.
Guys, let's um, let's move on. We'll bring this up in two weeks. Sound good?
Yeah.
So you wanna wait that long?
Yes, sir.
All right.
We're gonna have to, because we're gonna have to amend the policy at time, time. So she's gonna have to come out with amendments to that policy.
Okay.
Because right now, we'd be breaking our own policy if we just went.
And you don't think we should just look through the policy book that we're gonna do a couple of years ago?
Last year, and I did, and the selectmen didn't like it.
I haven't even got the policy book yet.
Uh, yes, you did.
Got the rewrite.
You got the rewrite. Nobody liked it.
Yeah, we got the rewrite. You don't think we should get a policy book and then sit and study all of them? Because we're gonna go through the um, we got the benefits, every.
Okay, that's, that's a difference.
Yeah, that's. All right, so we're gonna move on. Two weeks, June first, we'll come in and make that decision, correct?
Yeah.
Well, that's recommendations from town administrator and code enforcement officer. Maybe that would help too. And we'll have ours to you.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, next item is, I just wanted to let you know that one of our police officers has submitted her notice of resignation, um, Officer Giff. Uh, her last day will be June sixth, you think you have a copy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, and then the next, and, and it's sad to see her go, I must say that, she was one of the SROs, and she did a terrific job as an SRO.
She was one, she was one of our veteran SROs, that was hard to get somebody that fit in there, and it's over the schooling. But another policy that should be fixed.
And then the last item for open session is the Levy Park Grant.
You didn't have that online, let's.
I know, I wrote it online.
She added that she sees spit. She just added that she sees spit, Ruben.
Well, um, you approved the, the application for the grant a couple of meetings ago, with some conditions on it that they get the okay from the Parks and Rec Commission, because some of the grant money and some of the grant projects when it was going to go into Jones Field and some of the walking trails in there. The Parks and Rec Commission, nor anyone else, except for Planting Board and Selectmen, can have any meetings right now. So that's kind of a monkey wrench for, for the grant. So we were talking earlier about this, that perhaps those conditions be removed for the time being until the grant is either approved or denied, and if it's approved, it has to come back to the Board of Selectmen anyways to accept it. And hopefully at that time, maybe some of the governor's orders would then be loosened a little bit more, and the Parks and Rec Commission could have a meeting to discuss the, the, the items that are actually falling into their purview.
Yes.
I added that in that motion, was when I made it to, um, anything that's expended has to come back in front of the selectmen. So I don't understand where the problem is. They, we gave them the permission to put into the grant, and anything you spend it on to town property has to come back in front of us to say yes.
Alright, so here's the problem, you approved the grant application pending the approval of the Parks and Rec Commission. The Parks and Rec Commission, right now, cannot have a meeting to okay those conditions.
That's what I thought on Thursday night.
It's been canceled.
Oh, they canceled all the meetings.
Oh, okay.
Two tires.
I received an email saying it was going to happen.
Yeah, after today's emergency management meeting.
Okay, okay.
It's two tires, one, one meeting.
Right on.
So, so the Levy Park trustees cannot submit that grant application, because there's a condition on it. There's a condition on the submittal, you've got to get rid of that condition so that they can send it in, and then when it comes back for time for acceptance, then you can put a condition on the acceptance of it.
When we did it, we gave them permission as parks and recs, or as the Levy Park Committee, to go ahead with their application for the grant.
Pending an okay from the Parks and Rec Commission.
Which they can't have a meeting.
Right.
So, so what's the, what do we do?
Remove the condition.
Remove the condition.
That's all.
This is, this is the way your motion read last week, if you're through the method, simple. Earl McDonald made a motion to allow the Levy Park trustees to fill out the grant for eighty size twenty, twenty percent match, and before the work is done on the town trails, would like someone to come in, both the board of selectmen, let them know what they're going to do, whether it is going to be changing of the trails, subject to Parks and Recreation Review, and seconded by Paula Rochelle, while Holt asked to clarify the motion. He asked if it was referenced through the grant money being approved, Rosemarx stated, not for the, not for any expenditure, but for any work being done on the trails.
But that doesn't say they have to have a meeting.
It said the, it has to be reviewed by Parks and Rec.
If they're going to work on the trail.
But that's part of the, the application.
They have to show the work on the trail, so my thing today was, no means no one meetings, any accident, unless it's an emergency meeting, this cannot be considered as an emergency meeting, that the selectmen approved the writing of the grant to, to go after the grant. If it is approved and we receive it, that time there, the selecting can go to Parks and Rec Commission, say work with the trustees, how the money will be spent on town-owned trails.
That follow into the purview of the Parks and Rec.
That follow underneath the purview of the Parks and Rec Commission. So if we could change that, we could at least apply for the grant. We cannot come to an agreement once it's approved, we do not use the grant, we return the grant, that's my understanding, is that correct? We can always return the grant if it's not expended?
Um, all grants are different, but I don't think that they will even send us a check until it is officially accepted. So there could, there can be a little bit of a delay there. Need somebody to make a motion to remove that condition on the previous motion.
To make a motion to remove the last meeting's motion to, um.
To, to remove the.
To remove the Parks and Recreation. Reviewing of the.
Not reviewing of the grant.
That's a tough one.
Remove the work.
The trails. I don't really know how to say it.
That's why I don't understand, it's, it's just.
They're going to work on the trail, Parks and Rec has to review before they go in and trash their trails.
Basically, we're amending. Basically, we're amending the motion of last meeting.
Yeah, to remove the condition of.
Remove the condition of. Fox and Rec.
For now.
For now.
For the application.
For the application, yeah.
I think we should put no money expended until they come in front of us.
It's a tough one. Do I have a second?
No, seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
No.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative, four, four, one against. I hope Mary can notice who's voting yes and who's voting no. You should.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am, what, what next?
I have nothing further in open session.
Okay, gentlemen, move on, approval of minutes, May fourth, regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve, May fourth, uh, minutes.
Motion made by Burden McDonald, through the May fourth minutes, as submitted. I have a second.
Second.
Made a second by Paula Rochelle, any discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Yes, vote is in affirmative, five, four, May fourth, twenty twenty, non-public. And the town administrator has the pen. Yes, ma'am.
These, uh, these minutes were previously sealed, and they should remain as such. So I think if you just approved the minute as is, they will remain sealed until you unseal.
The total minutes. I make that motion, Mr. Chairman, we approved their minutes, non-public, May fourth, twenty twenty. I have a second.
Second.
Hold to approve non-public session minutes, if they leave as they were approved. I have a second by Paula Rochelle. Hold the board, Mr. McDonald, discussion, Mr. McDonald.
I'm trying to see. Thought we went into non-public four.
Nope. Go.
Oh, that's right, keep going.
Legal, legal.
Yeah, I was thinking it'd be underneath here, but.
Give you a minute.
No, I remember it now. Think we should leave it sealed.
And that's the way it was.
That's the way it is.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, I'll poll the board, Mr. Holt. Alright, yes, Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote is in the affirmative, five, four. Okay, gentlemen, moving on, consent to gender approval, which you have at your table. Motion to approve the consent to gender as submitted to us on the eighteen, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Rochelle, sort of accept their consent, the consent to gender as submitted on the eighteen, twenty twenty. Second, Mr. Holt, any discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, Rochelle.
Yes.
Vote is in affirmative, five, four. Discussion reaction, request appointments being noted, we do have a non-public session, gentlemen. Need a motion to go into non-public session, I meet the R S A, I hold on three, paragraph two, E.
Second.
Second motion made, a second, any discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, and I'm going to call for a five-minute break.